Roll call please.
Mayor Jane, yes.
Kathy, yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Neil.
Any motion to approve the transfer of the police revenue from the general fund to the police fund, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bill.
Kathy, yes.
Mayor Jane, yes.
Yes.
Any motion to approve the police fund monthly operating fund transfer, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Kathy, yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Jane, yes.
Any motion to approve the interest transfer, please?
So moved.
One second, then.
Roll call please.
Kathy, yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Jane, yes.
Susan will not be here tonight, but I will tell you that we are scheduled for a construction meeting this week, Wednesday at one thirty. So I anticipate that construction of the next phase on the cherry should begin shortly. So, Peggy Catherine is not here. Mr. State, you're up.
If you would, sir. Do you have, oh, Ronnie, if you want to hear?
Yes, please.
Okay, we went to the planning commission last, well, two months ago, and we submitted a, this is a Tudor property on the corner there where Bill Sweet's, sales offices and the storage building there. Um, did I, could you bring this? The application, I'm just doing it.
I'm just happy for them, I'm so happy for them.
I know.
That application was better.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Yes, what I really need, Rick, versus the mayor, the formula, I had this meeting, and I'm still not quite sure. I understand why, I guess. And, just to show you some of the drawing. Now, this one, I only got one copy of it, but this one is a drawing. Here's where Billy Sweet's building is.
You're talking his office.
His office, and in the storage building.
Uh-huh.
Now, on the old deed, it has one, two, three, four different parcels, and they're split as the colors indicate. I mean, it's sort of messed up, but it's not how Bill wants it, and he's purchasing it on land contract from about Tudor. What he wants to do is go this way with a, with a tract and this tract back here.
Wait a minute, you lost me. I'm not sure what property you're talking about.
I might want to move that closer to her so she can understand what you're doing, should I?
Oh, you mean the lot that's out there, or?
Yes.
Okay.
See, here's how the deed states it now.
Uh-huh.
There's a deed, or a description for this, there's a description for this parcel, accepting this, there's a description for this, and then another tract here. So it's really four, it's, it's three tracts, I guess I can just say.
Okay.
And he wants to make it two. Now, all these lines on here, they, I have to put them on there for the survey.
Yeah.
And so that's why I colored this in so you could see it. So it's a slight change of the property, and this is the new one, so he wants to have the real estate office and in their storage building would be on one deed. Now, you know, it's kind of, it's very confusing, really.
Why is that?
Well.
Tax-wise, it's a lot.
Well, not really tax-wise. The, the original lots were split like this. This is lot fourteen, fifteen, this is lot fifteen, this is lot fourteen, fifteen. So all these are part lots, they're part of fifteen and fourteen. What we propose is to put the line right back where lot fifteen is over here, so this whole parcel will be.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, this will be fourteen. And they park cars in there, I think Brower does, and possibly, you know, they would want to sell that to him at a certain point in time. Maybe not, release it to him now, I don't know what the agreement is, but that's, that was the thought that Bill has. When he was buying it on contract, so when he purchases it, he wants it to be in these two tracts rather than the four parcels that were kind of messed up. And, and the engineer's office or the tax map office has also required us to do a survey on them. So we surveyed the property, and we have new legals for each tract. And that's why I'm here, because we're combining parts of tracks.
Well, in the past, anytime you combine or split lots, council has to vote. So what we're doing here is what they're asking to do here is they're asking you to combine these two lots into.
One.
One, and then turn around and split it into two.
Oh.
Because now, because now, because now it's four, it's four tracks right now.
Yeah.
So first thing they have to do is what they propose is to put it together as one, which council has to vote on that to take place. And then, then they proposed to turn around and divide those two into two, which council has to vote on that, split of that two lots also, before they can proceed with anything else. They come to the planning commission, we told them the first thing you have to do is you have to go to council, you have to, you have to achieve the, uh, permission from council to combine the two and then to split them, and then you can come back to planning with your, with your drawings as to what you want to take place. So that's the reason Jimmy's here tonight before you on this.
So that's essentially what we're here for.
Okay. I don't see a problem with. That's better than having a whole lot. You gotta make three or four lots, make one made, one of them.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's just what the, it's a process we have to go through. It's just what we have to go through if, if, if they want to proceed. First, they gotta combine it as, as one, and then they gotta split it as two instead of four. And what that's gonna do then is allow him to sell that lot.
Make a lot.
Well, he'll allow you.
Yeah.
In the future, if he so chooses to sell that extra lot at some point in time. Now, there was also some discussion about a right-of-way here, right, on this one end by the alley?
Okay, the alley is not platted, meaning it's never been officially used, opened as an alley or officially in the records as an alley. People use it, they've used it for years, and so when we took this in, we had our line down the center line of the approximate alley here, it's, it's a roadway, I'll show you. Right, it's, the alley comes through here, which are the dashlines, and then the property line goes right down the middle of that alley, which is a good thing. When we took it in to check, the tax map office said we need to have a right-of-way.
Yeah.
So we put a right-of-way, driveway easement from, from Washington back to this back lot. So they do have, and it's actually fifteen feet. So it's, you know, the width plus the alley is over now, the pavement is also over here, too. So everybody's gonna use it the same way, it's just a way of making sure that this property is not landlocked. So it will have, you know, be part of lot fourteen with a new legal description going around this, and it will also have an easement, and this property will be subject to that easement. So it's very common practice. So it does get just a little bit complicated.
Now, on your application here, it states that this will be the real estate office and storage parking lot for vehicle repair.
Well.
So this building that you're putting up is gonna be commercial then?
Uh, it's, what he's told me, it would need a storage building, um, it would fit in with the general business district, it already is done. The back lot is, or the back new parcel or lot that we're creating is vacant, there'll be nothing on it, except for cars that are.
Yeah, agreed to the property.
Yeah, there's a lot of people parked there, it seems like.
But that lot will belong to Mayor.
Yes, well, it belongs to Tudor now, and they always allow them to do that, so.
It's a little remiss.
Yeah.
So, the new, they are proposing a new addition, and that would be voted on by the planning commission.
That's correct, Kathy.
And it's a, it's a small building addition to what he has there, and he says it's going to be for storage. But the plan's up, and they're upstairs. So, the front lot, which has the real estate office and the storage building, will be on that one lot.
So you're talking about, and what this, the storage building would be right here on the, on the other side of this building?
Correct.
Now, it would, it's gonna go right up onto that alley, or?
No, it's just.
This is, and.
That's it.
This is right there.
This, okay.
By thirteen by thirty.
Yes, it's something, but.
That's it.
That's it. It's a small one, it's a very small addition, I mean.
Well, we don't have to.
No, we don't have anything.
We have a plan of some.
No, the addition and the setbacks and everything will fall under planning commission.
Yeah.
What council needs to take into consideration tonight, whether they want to combine the lots and then split lots?
I make a motion that we combine the lots and then split them.
One at a time.
Oh, nice.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
We, if you so choose to do so, we need a motion to combine lot fourteen and fifteen.
Parts, parts.
Parcels.
Parcels.
Yes.
I need a second.
Is that the motion made then?
Yes.
One second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Jane, yes.
Kathy, yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Now, it would be a motion to split lot, parcel fourteen and fifteen into two.
So moved. I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy, yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Jane, yes.
And we will be in contact with you to set up a planning commission meeting, Jimmy.
Okay. So the application will be, yeah.
It's still on here, yeah?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more.
And we have a, um, what do you call it? A map, a blueprint of just the alley, so we need to note it somewhere other than the minutes that now you have, has an easement there or will have.
Well, it'll be recorded when they, when they change the lot.
Yeah, okay, right, yeah, okay. Maybe on the map.
We have a part of our survey at the taxes.
When it goes through, when they change around down there, then it'll be recorded as an easement there.
Right. But that entire alley that runs from Spring all the way to Washington is not platted?
It's not, no, there's an alley from, you know where the church is?
Yes.
That is an alley north and south, and also goes east and west on, up to Spring, but it doesn't come to Main Street or Washington Street.
There could be a lot of alleys in the town.
There probably are, I just wondered.
There's a few in there in town, yes.
Well, there's, um.
There's always a chance that OPS will not recognize it. But according to this, according to chief by passing this ordinance, they usually do. And he's spoken with the sheriff's department and they'll recognize it if we put this ordinance in place. Now, there is some stipulation that it's gotta be an Ohio golf cart because they can't plate something that's not in the state of Ohio. So if it's in Indiana, Missouri down there or elsewhere, and they get on the roads, they are simply taking a chance of being stopped if they don't have that plate on there. But what the chief wants to do is get this ordinance in place, that they're gonna have a meeting, and he'd like to have this done, so they wanna have a meeting down here, I think it's the 16th at the campground, and so they can do the inspections on the golf carts and meet with everybody and tell the situation and stuff. So, having said all that, ordinance number 2015-02. An ordinance regulating the use of golf carts with the, excuse me, within the incorporated limits of the village of New Paris. Section 1, definition. As defined in this chapter, A, golf cart is a motor vehicle as that term is defined under Ohio Revised Code, section 4501.01. B, section 2, equipped. A, a golf cart must be equipped as outlined in Ohio Revised Code, section 4513. Section 3, driver restriction. A, driver, the driver must have a valid driver's license as specified in Ohio Revised Code, Section 4, insurance. A, owner must have proof of insurance and carries such proof in his or her possession or in the golf cart at all times, Ohio Revised Code, section 4909.010101a. Section 5, golf cart inspection. A, no person shall operate a golf cart within the village of New Paris unless the golf cart has been inspected by the New Paris Police Department and is compliant with all pertained sections of this ordinance. Section 6, title and license plates. A, once inspected, the certification of inspection shall be presented to the county title department for ins- insurance of a title so as to obtain license plates from the department of motor vehicle. Once licensed, golf carts may only be operated on public streets, alleys, and roadways posted at 35 mile per hour over or lower within the incorporates, incorporated limits of the village of New Paris. B, golf carts are not permitted on public sidewalks, as with any motor vehicle, safety must be observed at all time during operations. Seven, penalty. Any person convicted for pleading guilty to violation of this ordinance shall be held to the penalty set forth in the Ohio Revised Code, section 4511.99. Section 8, emergency, this, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency necessary for the immediate preservation of the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the village of New Paris by reason of the fact that this ordinance will provide essential services to the residents of the village and will aid in the orderly administrations of the affairs of the village, and shall go into effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
I have, um, this just pertains to golf carts without those other, there's some bigger vehicles and one of them, that's our house.
This is golf carts only?
Only. I don't know what the restrictions are on those others, there's always gots of people in this one.
Well, if you're talking about forerunners, I don't think forerunners are allowed on a golf cart.
They're green with a golf cart type, they're big, I don't know what they're called.
I don't know either.
They're similar to a golf cart, but I don't think they're considered.
They're just, well, anything on the road, anything on the road is supposed to have a license plate on it, or there any violation of the ordinance of the village, it can be stopped and ticketed.
And this is a good thing because there's a lot of residents that's buying, who just drive them around town.
And this, this ordinance is to make sure that everyone are inspected. Number two, they have a valid plate on them, and that they follow all procedures for the law, ensure the Ohio law, Ohio law section, because, you know, sometimes we get golf carts in here on the road, so they, people who ride all over town on them, you know, are we gonna jump up and down about that? And doubt of our offices are, but here's the thing, if they're going down the state highway, there are susceptible to OSP coming through and writing a ticket. So, that's the chance they take. This is more or less, you know, this is basically for the campground. We have a nice community campground, we get a lot of visitors down here, they bring a lot to the village, and this is strictly to try to protect the ones that follow, follow the law from the, from the campground to travel to other places in, in the village, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this, but I know there's a lot of people down there that don't have the Ohio.
Well, and that's, and there again, they will hold a meeting, they will be given a copy of this, and everybody comes in, and they get out there, they're taking their chances. Our officers are not gonna stop them. But if, or unless they're doing something wrong. But if the sheriff comes through, or state patrol comes through, and they don't have a plate on it, then they're, they're taking a chance of receiving a ticket from.
Right.
Or if they have an accident or somebody. Either way, if they're not covered by insurance and license plates, they're, they're available to whatever rash that comes after that. Now, now, there's other ways, now, if they go, if they come out, you know, and we, I've talked with the campground a little bit about this, for the ones that don't want, camp doesn't qualify on the license plate, you know, they could come out of a campground onto Cedar Springs, cross 320, and once they're going down to Federico, then they're out of, they're under our authority and not under OSP and sheriff's. So they could go all the long way around town to get to places, but the ones they get on that highway, then they're, they're susceptible to whatever takes place. So, that's up to them people to discuss with their campers.
Well, this at least makes it, makes the information available to anybody.
We are trying, we are trying to work in partnerships with the campground. And with the other businesses down, the people from the campground, so.
That's good.
Well, having said all that, then I would need a motion to accept ordinance 2015-02. Roll call, please.
Mary Jane, yes.
Kathy, yes.
Yes. I would need a motion to approve the three reading ruling, pass this as emergency, please.
I don't think that would you doubt.
Second. Roll call, please.
Neil.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Mary Jane, yes.
Building, streets, now, other than the project coming?
I don't know, he's been one ahead and filled up the bottom, it's finally got a chase and boost tonight.
It's made a big difference to.
Yes, it did, it really did. I mean, he's only doing what he can do.
Well, no, but I mean, seems to have gotten pretty good handle on a lot of it.
Yeah. He's put in a couple of long days, gets, gets stuff taken care of, and he's there.
Lights, findings.
I don't, uh, yeah, I don't think it's.
Okay. Sanitation, hygiene.
Well, the mattresses are gone. Took a long time, but they're gone. Um, at least there are a lot to do.
Okay. All right, I received a bid from Greg Stevens, I've already told him to go ahead and be mowing the, the schoolyard up there to try and keep it happily under control. I have here, uh, his bid, uh, for the mowing for the village.
Just for that?
He already does the village lots for the street department, or for the, uh, BPA, and he's charged $125 per mowing to BPA. The old school is 150 per mowing. So, the total is 275 per mowing, plus $20 for that little strip that we, the sidewalk we put in last year before, from the campground to the carryout.
Okay.
Campground used to mow that, but since we've done the construction there, they are no longer doing that, so that $20 is for mowing that and keeping it mowed out there.
Between the street and the sidewalk.
Yes, there's a six, eight foot area there between the two that's, he can mow it. So, is there, uh, if this is acceptable to everybody on this mowing, then it's under enough that we didn't have to get bids on it, and in the past when we got bids on it, Greg's always been lower than anybody else anyway. So, if anyone has an issue with this, if not, I would need a motion to agree to this agreement.
Well, and the motion, we agree with the price that they gave us for the mowing here up at the school.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Mary Jane, yes.
Yes.
Kathy, yes.
Yes. Planning, uh, we will get to that, what the next meeting with Mr. State and then a couple other people else, so there'll be a couple people in the community next meeting. BPA, Kevin is not here. Uh, everyone knows that we have, Mr. Rick Snyder is on board with us now, he will be with us permanently, he seems to be taking graphs of our situation and, and all that adequately. Uh, he will be here full time, I think he told me on the 17th, is that correct?
Um, probably the 18th.
18th, he'll probably be here full time on 18th, because he had to give a four week notice to his other place of employment. But he is meeting our compliance hours with BPA now, he's coming in the evenings and working, and we do our, our, to be compliant with the state. And the next step, we'll be looking for another person over on BPA, and that discussion is, will be coming at a later date. Um, under old business, the fuel tanks, we've had, uh, you know, we've, we've decided we wanna go that direction, but the fire department decided they wanna maybe get in on this, and, uh, I, I went down to talk to the fire department today. And all their vehicles is diesel, and their ambulances and everything are diesel. So, they're supposed to give me some numbers, uh, as to what their monthly uses is, uh, to, to try and decide about how big a tank out there, and no, there is no, there is no restrictions about setting the tanks, we checked them hometown on that. Uh, the only thing is, we were gonna get off-road pricing on our diesel, which is our Gator in the back home, but if the fire department comes on board, then it will be the regular price of diesel, it might be a little break there somewhere, but we don't know what that would be yet. So, that discussion will have to take place with the, the fire department as to whether we wanna venture into that right now or not. They'll, if they, I don't, we just can't determine until we know how many gallons a month they're using, whether it's gonna be perfect to, them to do this with us right now, if they're fueling, they have fuel card right now, they're fueling it wherever they're at, or wherever they're at. I don't think there's any diesel left in town, I don't think, but I could be wrong on that. So, anyway, we're still, as the village, gonna move forward with that, uh, because it's gonna be a cost savings to us, plus 24-hour accessibility and stuff, so, whether the fire department come on or not, we're gonna move forward.
Okay. I have to stop my girl, Beth, for a second.
Wait a minute, I've been looking at this resolution that he's presented, has anybody read this?
I have not.
It's mutual aid agreement that will be, um, managed by, uh, the state, once you sign up, then if you need a call, and someone else needs it, they call you, you know, if you run it through, as far as I can tell, the state, um, it has to do with, uh, emergency management and that type of thing, you would be.
Well, I think this was.
Paid for somebody to come in if they had to have someone come in to help you. But I think it's, it's, you know, of course, I suppose if you need a mutual aid, if you lost some employee, that would be one thing, this has more to do with emergency situations, I think.
Well, it seems to be a whole lot there, and when I glanced at it, you know, the reason for this pertains to the fact that, you know, last, in, in, in discussion of last meeting, we talked about that organization, just like the situation we're in, that you can sign up and they will, they will make contact with people who have the licenses and situations and all that. And that's, this is part of that agreement, but I have not had a chance to read that, and I don't know that this has to be, does this have to be in place tonight?
No.
Because I think what we're gonna do on that is, I'd like to have the time to read this first.
Sure.
Before we do this, so my intentions are, my intentions are not to do this.
So nobody saw the plans at the regular April meeting.
Yes, I, I.
The rest of that, Kathy, that they're already mentioning, that we are already part of that within the county anyways, emergency management. Whereas we have to, we tell them, what have we got, and say we have a tornado somewhere else.
Yes, we've done that.
Then we, this is basically, this is still the same thing, and this is all part of that, so.
It amounts to it, but I still like to have a chance to read it, what we read out loud, and so we will table that for the next meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't know whether or not we had already, I wasn't, I wasn't here in April.
Yeah, so, well, this was added to the agenda, and I haven't had a chance to look at it either, so, uh, like I say, as Neil said, I don't think it's anything in particular other than the fact it's something we need to do to be able to join in.
Had to post our people on there too, so.
Somebody needs assistance from us.
Help them.
Some of, some of that falls under, uh, homeland security.
Yeah.
All that homeland security stuff, the classes that we all had to take at 1.3, I'm sure that's all tied.
That's, that's exactly what that is.
All that tied in here together, I'm sure, so, but, there's no emergency on this thing, so I think we're gonna have to give everyone a chance to read it.
No, that's fine.
She hasn't waited last yet, I think it's mandatory, we take that one.
I think it's mandatory, but if one hasn't had a ticket for all of us.
That's right.
No, I have not had that one.
I'm getting back to, um.
You're required to do that, but at one time within your four-year period.
Yeah. Um, the burial, um, ordinance that I, we discussed last month, um, I have forgotten, I called attorney Hoffs about, uh, the ORC to get some clarification on the cremation and the burial part, and he hasn't returned my call yet. I did call Barnes's Funeral Hall and talked to them about how long they would hold the ashes, and they said up to 30 days. And, uh, that's, that, I just wanted to bring that up so I wouldn't forget it, so.
Okay, well, in, in regards to that, I've had a discussion with one of, with one of the township trustees, and was, uh, having a discussion about that, where we're required, you know, we're required to pay for the cremation, but the burial part was, uh, I had questions whether we had to do that or not.
Yeah, that's why I called the attorney.
And, uh, I still have some questions to it, but, in the meantime, uh, what I think is gonna, what I've been told is, well, I don't wanna be premature here, but in conversation, I think that what we're gonna get worked out with the township is, we're, in these situations, we will buy one plot, but we wanna, we wanna.
Well, it's cremated, you can do that.
We want to put eight in a plot instead of four.
Yeah.
And I think township is going to make that recommendation at the next meeting to allow that to take place, 'cause right now it's four. So, township is working with this, with us towards trying to find a solution that we can all, uh, be satisfied with in this situation. So that, and it keeps us, I think it's $400 a plot, so, you just do, do the math, if we had to do eight, what's it gonna cost us, and we can do eight on one, what's it gonna cost us, it's self-explanatory.
I got some paperwork from Rick's farm, and I forgot to bring it, on prices and that.
Yeah. So, that's, the township is working towards that, and once they, they, if they so choose to go in that direction and pass the, then we'll bring it back to council as to what's gonna take place definitely, but right now that's what we're working on, so, trying to save what we can save. All right, we're down to Dearborn Life AD policy renewal, this is for, you know, employees, the renewal is due June 1st, 2015. I have attached the certifications of coverage of Dearborn along with your current rates that will remain in force and should be, should the council decide to renew it as is. So, nothing is changing with what benefits package we have now on the life and AD, so I would need a motion to renew.
I know it's gonna be renewed with Dearborn Life, with all one and AD insurance, prevent you.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Mary Jane, you know, Kathy, yes.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes. Now, I also have from MetLife, Dill and VSP, renew rates, no change. I have attached the renewal for the executive Dawson products offered through the nonprofit alliance, renewing 7/115. The great news is that your MetLife and VSP rates will remain as is through 7/116, so if the board approves the continuous of these products, everything can remain exactly as is.
Jane, have you used either of these?
Um, I've not used the dental, I've used the dent.
Are, you know, I'm just wondering if this is satisfactory, I mean, Vision doesn't do much for you.
Yeah, that is, so, and I haven't used a dental, so it's.
But you haven't heard anyone else make comment about using those?
No, but it's not increasing, it usually does increase, but it's not, so, that's a good thing, the rates aren't changing.
I would need a motion to, uh, renew the MetLife, Dill, and VSP Vision renewal rates if the council so chooses.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Bill.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Mary Jane, Neil.
Yes. Anything else from anybody?
Of course.
Check in the bid, check in the bid.
Well, I, um, I got a phone call today from a gentleman that's interested in purchasing, well, he wants the property at 311 West Main Street. He just bought the little house down there, and I think it's 311, and he said that if he could get that property, he would tear it down, so I called the courthouse, called the auditor's office, and they sent me to the sheriff's auction, oh, Linda Moore takes care of the sheriff auctions, she sent me back to the auditor's office. But anyway, uh, to me, they are having a meeting Wednesday, the auditor's office is having a meeting Wednesday to discuss these properties that nobody wants or, I guess, they, so they're thinking about having an auditor sale. First of all, they said they would probably offer it to the village at what cost, I don't know yet, maybe it could be just a dollar or whatever. Um, and then this man called me that, that bought 311, and he's interested in the property, and he said if the village got it, he would like for them to consider turning it over to him, and he would tear it down and clean it up, but we cannot do that because it's just like getting rid of a car or anything else, we have to have a public auction. So, I told him he didn't have to be sorry, if it was offered to the village, just think about this, whether you want it or not, and then have a public auction, I don't know, make money off of it or whatever.
It's, yeah.
Well, if I remember correctly, that was, that house in particular, according to mine, was part of the money from the commissioner's office a year or so ago when they were willing to tear those houses down, and we could not get a release from, renovation from the, from the people that owned the house from the mortgage, the mortgages would not, either way.
No, it was the mortgage company that would communicate with or attorney or lady or anybody.
I seem to recall that was the people that would release it. Either way.
No, 'cause they let it go back.
I, I find it, the irony thing of this is, this could've been all done a year and a half ago, and now all of a sudden they're saying they wanna.
Well, the bank, the bank, yeah.
That's fine, I hope that takes place, but I'm curious, is the fact is, you know, it could've been done.
Yes.
Anyway, yeah, well, that's good.
Well, what happened, they, it went into delinquency, and then the, uh, the bank left, never paid the taxes, or whoever.
Somehow somebody's got some leverage against the bank.
Yeah, so now it's going, uh, it's went up for sheriff's auction, but no one did on it.
I see.
And, and now.
Is that the only one in town that's gonna do that?
Uh, I will know Wednesday whether we have any more or not, or Thursday, I'm supposed to call Thursday, but I just want to, you guys to think about whether you would want to accept that however, whatever that property and then resell it, or, or just let whoever bid on it, whoever gets, whoever has the highest bids gonna buy it anyway.
Right, but we could get it for, lower than a resale, is what you're choosing to do.
But we can't just sell it to one individual, it has to be a public auction.
You have to have an option, yeah, so.
But they won't know until after their meeting Wednesday, all that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Refresh my memory on the lockroom board out, the house for the state. Did we not agree to give that, or not give it to, but let the library use that as parking?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, do we need to post some signs on that, have some signs posted in the library parking, how did you get that taken care of, so that?
Well, it probably wouldn't hurt anything, I mean, you know, we told the library, I've had numerous, you know, this is like the fourth time I've answered a question, yes, we tore it down, and yes, it belongs to us, and yes, you can use it for parking, and we even put the grindings in there, I probably needs to add some more grinding, 'cause it's probably settled some, so it probably needs some more grinding to it, but yeah, it's, it's for their, it's for their use, so, if you, if you wanna sign here, I don't bother with me, but we probably, uh, probably will put some more, uh, grindings in there to, you know, now it's that time to settle, kind of level up, but you know, I told, I told six times, I've dug it through at least two times.
I have to, I've talked to them also, but I'm also thinking that maybe when the, the payment company comes in, that we can have that roll or something, you know, get up the roller and, or whatever.
It's turned pretty well, but.
Get it back down.
We can, we can talk this soon, and then, maybe, you know, if we have, uh, material excess of somewhere, maybe we can get something done in this next project.
Yeah, I'd find more.
So, yeah.
I just want, I just wanted to bring that up to make sure.
Yeah, we voted on that a long time ago.
I know, we did.
So, anybody else?
I'm done.
All right. If not, next meeting will be June 1st, 2015, 7:00 PM, need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.